States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Alderman Bewick?
Here.
Hurley?
Here.
Here.
Kenan?
Here.
Here. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please. Before we do, we'd like to take the... And move the... Remove the sunshine law request and also the water rates program adjustment. We need to remove them for the time being. I'll need a motion, please. I have a motion by Alderman Kenan, second by Alderman Young.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Kenan?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes. Thank you. Citizens, come, please. Kim Lenoff?
Lenoff.
Lenoff.
I'm Kim Lenoff, and I've been a resident of Peabody for six years. My first item is about the termination of Stephanie.
Can you talk... Hold the mic up?
Hold the mic up, because I don't think it's on. I pushed and nothing. What do I do?
Steph, you don't have to do that anymore.
But if they're listed...
I have to do that.
I have to?
She was so good with it.
No, that is... You know, just talk loud.
I don't mind.
You don't mind? Okay. I think it's rather short-sighted, and I think it's more a personal decision rather than a personnel decision. And maybe you guys can get along with her, or maybe she spoke up when you would rather she didn't. But I think it was short-sighted. One reason is that she said that she did the... Several meetings, she sat in that chair right there and said that she did the job of four people. Where are the four people to replace her at this point? And for people who were left to do that job, do they have the experience that she picked up over all the years working in the position? That was my first thing. As a municipal employee, she has the right to sue if she's terminated without cause. Can we afford yet another lawsuit in Peabody? And I don't know if you guys thought about that. That's a possibility. My other issue is, I wanted to know what the policy was about municipal vehicles being outside the city. The ones with the numbered plate, like number 300, for example. Are they supposed to stay in the city?
Are you talking about during the day?
During the day.
For personal use or what?
Lunch. For lunch?
He's on the clock, so...
Then he's on the clock at the Oriental buffet last Wednesday.
Okay.
The truck had the windows down, of course, was not locked. So we're not securing city property. And I think if... I love that they have a lunchtime. They should have lunchtime, everyone should. But can he use his own personal car if he plans on eating lunch outside the city limits?
Well, if he's eating with other personnel or something, there's no reason...
Your guys in the truck.
Okay, well...
Both employees. Is that the policy? I remember complaining about this several administrators ago, and they said that the policy was that you weren't supposed to take them out of the city. And something about that the numbered license plate had some special significance, that it was supposed to be used within the city limits and not be used for traveling outside the city.
Well, it's... As of forward, we'll discuss it amongst ourselves and have other...
But there is no current policy, is that correct?
I'm not aware of one.
Thank you. Well, that's it, thanks.
You're quite welcome. Barb Nellens?
I don't have much to say, but it's the first time I've been here. And I've been around, spent all my life here in Peabody. And I'm very ashamed of...
Can you speak into the mic?
My... I think I'm pretty loud without it. But I was very ashamed when I sat there and watched you all laugh with the other men that came in here and was talking about the joker that was outside. And I wasn't very happy with that. Yeah, both of you did.
What joker was that one we're talking about?
When he was talking about all the people outside wanting him to sign a petition for Stephanie. So I just want to say, I'm not proud of you all, I can't. I think we need to have a little bit more respect for other people. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Marcus.
Mr. Mayor, how's the tourism tax? Do you do anything with that, collect it, or what's going on? Anybody know?
I believe we're waiting for an employee of the tourism to have an employee present for the tourism to collect it.
Have an employee present?
We need...
You don't have a committee set up, then?
No.
What means that you still cannot collect from the hotel railway without this?
No.
Yes, we can. And you shouldn't be...
Excuse me, ma'am. She knows more than you.
But the thing is, is we weren't collecting when we didn't have a committee or anything else either.
Okay.
We need to start collecting that money. That's a lot of money sitting out there that we can do with. I don't understand why not. We had attorneys working on it when I was on our own, there's attorneys working on it now.
Okay.
How did that committee work when you were on board? Did you have a committee?
We were setting up the committee. We had Russ Shackleford as the chairperson to set up the committee on it.
And we had somebody wanting to go to work for the motel over here for a dollar a year so we could spend the money? Do it right or don't do it at all?
No, Mr. Bewick, you had no clue. That wasn't a big clue. Yeah?
Okay, okay, okay.
Question mark above your head. Talking about that, Mr. Bewick, what are you going to go to the planning zoning for this guy?
Who the hell is gonna set up? Be wigs. He's gonna...
Excuse me.
Okay. You do your job up there on the table.
Mr. Mayor, you're supposed to enforce ordinances and laws, is what it says. Mr. Bewick has a business license, honey grass, and every time he's planning zoning for a special use permit, he needs to come from planning zoning to get a permit.
Well, as of yet, I'm not aware that Mr. Graves has approached him with...
Well, you fired the city attorney, you fired Ted, you fired Stephanie. I don't know if I'd approach you, you either.
Thank you. This is Ben Ford.
Good evening. I don't want to have my back to you, but I would like to present to the people if I could, if you don't mind. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Paula Spatafora, and I am a citizen of Board Two. And I would like to say good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board members, and my neighbors. Initially, I was going to give a final report on Peabody Free Library that was held this summer in Peabody Park One. But as I sat down to write, I had some additional thoughts. So if you will bear with me for the next five minutes, it would be appreciated. And excuse me if I read through my notes, because I really don't want to forget anything. As most of you know, I'm a numbers person and one who likes to review and access, assess whether or not a project worked or failed. What ideas we might use are discarded in the future, and what was gained or what was lost. First of all, I would like to thank the following people for their time and generous donations, for they deserve our recognition. Keith Ogil, Brenda Sims, Christine Kippen, Toby McQuerry, The Mormon Missionaries, Sue Harmon, Emile Kolansky, Dana LaPlante, Mary Gore, Jennifer Cox, Maya Clark, Scott Coffey family, Bilda and Daryl Kenan, Erin Caston and daughters of Finley and Lane, Julie Ponset, Russ and Terri Shackleford, Beth Lible, Brenda Cypress, Dave Young, and the Jesse Wallace family. I would also like to thank the Peabody Elementary, the principal, and all the summer school teachers that brought all the summer school kids over to the free library. That was very thoughtful of them. I'd like to thank Tracy Bruce and the leader for the wonderful article that they presented to about our city in regards to that. I would like to thank the Peabody Press, Peabody 2020, Jeff Co. 411. As you all know, I am not an internet person, I am not a social media person, and those people put on their sites without me asking to promote the free library. I would also like to thank Terry Thomas for encouraging the employees to support the free library. I would like to thank the city employees for fielding calls and giving out my card to other citizens or people that were requiring in regards to the free library. And I especially would like to thank Steve for faithfully, every week, taking the card very presentable with the grass cut, and for making sure that any riscade or beating was removed from the picnic table so that none of the children were exposed to that. He did a very good job in that regard. And I really want to thank everyone for all of their support. Now for the numbers. The library was held for 12 weeks during the summer, every Monday, in Peabody Park One. There was no cost to the citizens, and there was no cost to the city. We had 113 adults and 449 children attend, with a total of 562 visitors. We had 2,044 books donated, 52 book stacks were given away, 1,106 books were given away, and we have a balance left over of 930 books that we have remaining. The fund report is with the city, if anyone is interested or want to redo it, or feel free to contact me if you have any questions. I would like to share this, if you don't mind. The library project was started as a very small, small thing. I only had $50 and 100 books. I would have been content if I could have reached 50 children and given away those 100 books. For me, this project worked into something I hadn't even dreamed up. People, citizens of this town, came out to donate books, their time, visit, and bring children out to the library. From the listed donors, you can see that there were people from both sides of the aisle who participated. This report represents more than just numbers. It represents people sharing their thoughts and ideas with each other, giving of their time, their resources, taking pride in helping their neighbors and their community. I am proud and encouraged, and you all should be too, to see that a simple thing like a book can bring people together to start a dialogue with each other. I want to encourage you, no, I want to challenge each and every one of you to start a community project. It doesn't have to be great, it doesn't have to cost a lot, it could be anything from starting a free library in your neighborhood, organizing a Friday night bath cast crew, to working to find ideas and solutions to our net issue. Anything helps. Just do something. Just for your street or for the entire community. But most of all, I want you all to remember, this is your city. It starts with you. You have the ability to make it great. Take pride in it, be a positive force in it, get to know the people you share your city with, not just the ones who share your same views. It's okay to agree to disagree, because great solutions can be a result of these difficult great differences. Once again, I want to thank everyone for their awesome support and the opportunity to do this project. I have been blessed beyond measure, and now I challenge you to do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to the board.
Jim Kendall, Sewerville Adjustment. Pick your handle.
Mr. Jim Kendall came in last week and requested an adjustment on his Sewerville. And the reason he was adjusting and requesting an adjustment, because he was part of the original annexation movement or initiative that started in 2013, if I'm not mistaken. I may be off on the dates a little bit, but been a while. And he was fully on board with that. That process didn't get completed. And he was on the assumption, and from what he stated to myself, is that he was told he had been annexed. So he was waiting for his bill to reflect the new rate, which it did not. Now, he has a bill outstanding, which he's willing to take care of, but he's just asking for an adjustment on that rate, is what he's asking for.
Okay. So, last night we discussed the rate he was being charged was $72.14 a month, and now he's going to be charged...
$32.58 or something like that. The resident rate, sewer rate, is $35.87. And that's the rate he's asking to be built for.
And the reason is, is because the city didn't go... Didn't file the right paperwork at the county, so his annexation papers were kicked out because they don't have the right, the proper names or whatever on the deed, correct? Okay. So... He gave us a figure of $430.44. Is that what he's going to pay, or what? Or that you're wanting him to pay, or...
That's the... $430.44 is the adjusted amount. That's what he would owe the city if the board approved an adjustment. Otherwise, it will be the original bill.
Okay. Have yous all had a chance to look at it? Are you interested in adjusting it, or are you wanting to say what he was billed?
Did they start billing him with the gross receipt tax? Did they change that, thinking he was annexed? I'm sorry, did you go to break up? On a gross receipt tax?
Okay.
When he annexed, that would have been part of the package, correct?
If he had been annexed, he would have been... His rate would have changed to the resident rate of 35, whatever that number was.
Right, but he would be into the city limits?
Yes.
Okay. Then that means he... Well, my question is, is he paying the 5% or whatever they were paying for...
On the tax?
On taxes.
I'll have to research that. I can't answer that. I don't know an answer to that. I can get it to you, but I don't know the answer.
Okay. Then I think we need to postpone this until we get further research and find out where we're at with that. I mean, we said, and I still had a question last night, of why his bill was 32-something in 2013 and 14.
I did ask that question today, and that was the non-annex rate for individuals' houses on our sewer system. That was the going rate.
$32?
Yes.
I know a gentleman over there paying over $73.
I can't speak to that. I can only speak of when I talked to Sue today and the building, utilities, and that's the response I got from Sue.
And he pays that price because he did not want annexes in the sewer?
Okay, but this gentleman...
Okay. How's your time? I think we need... I think we need to postpone it and do a little more research.
I'm glad to take all your questions, and I'll research them, and I'll get back to you. That's all I can do right now.
Well, that'll give us an idea of how we should... How we should work.
Okay, then I need a motion to postpone it for the time being.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
I have a motion by Alderman Bewick, second by Alderman Kenan.
Alderman Bewick?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Kenan?
Yes.
Ms. Edmonds.
My name's Diana Edmund.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
And I live at 104 West Second.
You can't hear.
Okay, she's Mrs. Edmonds, and she lives at...
104. 104.
Nobody else can get out of their seats to do it.
West Second Street.
104 West Second Street, thank you.
And I'm here, again, to find out about my property, David. My fence.
Brains.
You know, I didn't ask for a lot, but I've been put off since it all happened.
Okay.
And that's all I want, is my fence back.
Well, I know that the city's sewer, or the city's insurance company says it was an act of God, and...
It wasn't an act of God at all. It's called preventative maintenance. That did not happen.
Actually, Mr. Bewick's trash logged it up.
Pardon me?
Did you get pictures of that? Did you get pictures of that?
Did Bewick's trash log it up?
How do you cut down...
I'm a resident, I've lived here for 33 years.
An artificial tree.
Excuse me.
How do you cut down inside this storm drain, an artificial tree? How do you cut it up with a chainsaw? That's what I want to know. And you know, I live on this side of the creek, and I have a storm sewer, and I have a creek. I'm the only one that takes care of my creek.
Okay.
The only one. I've been going 11 years, I've never seen the lid of the storm drain land by foot across the yard.
Okay.
My fence was 15 months old. I worked for 11. I'm improving my property.
Amen.
And I have lived next door to everyone that Peabody is only concerned about the renovation. Only, because the house hasn't been painted in 40 years, and that's why I put my privacy fence up. There were 17 people living in a house at one time, over my 10 years of being here. Put my privacy fence up, 15 months old, and it's gone. And I do have a question. Last night, Mr. Young, you asked me a question.
Yeah, I wondered where you got your paint.
You wondered why I went all the way to St. Charles to get my paint. Did you ask me that?
Today, or last night?
Last night.
Yes, I did.
I wanted to know why you asked me that.
Well, I thought maybe if I'd have known, I could have gotten the paint a little cheaper, but I... But I didn't know.
That's where I do my business.
You said you work there. I don't know.
I work in St. Charles every day.
Okay.
And when I improve my property, I don't want to do it again. And I expect somebody to help me put my fence back up, or make the neighbors save their house and fix it up. And I'm sorry, but your maintenance man do a half-assed job. The day that they finally clean the storm sewer out, I went the next day because of all the debris they left. Up the hillside, everything, 10 bags I put around that storm sewer the next day for them to pick up. And by the time I found the bottom, everything would have went back in the storm sewer. Now you tell me. Now, I don't... I don't think so. I don't think so. And you know what? I'm not done yet.
You don't believe in God.
That is a great paper.
Well, it's been turned... It's my understanding, it's been turned into the insurance company, and the insurance company's denied the claim. Okay? So, at this point, what you're looking at is a citizen claiming that the city is responsible. We didn't know our insurance, saying they're not. What you're dealing with as a board is you're the steward of public funds. Are you going to do that for each and every citizen every time there's a sewer backup? Overflow of the water? That could create wide a few issues. She should go through the insurance character.
Okay, what's the... Four things.
I think it was our responsibility, I really do.
Can you hold the flagging down to the end of the meeting? Thank you. Well...
Have we not in the past paid for sewer damage to people's basements that were flooded?
Should have.
Like up 100? I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars? And then we have other people that have had the plumbing, the backup put in at the city's expense in the past?
Can I answer that, since I'm really much only one that knows the history of that in here? Mrs. Edmund, just speaking of her fence and a ditch that was not cleared out, you're talking about a sewer. Mrs. Edmund needs to install a black backflow device, like everybody else in the city has been made to, then her sewer will not. That's why the city stopped paying for it, because everybody's supposed to have a backflow device, so they don't have backup in their basements.
So you're saying that the city's never paid for the backflow device?
We don't do it anymore.
Anymore?
There was a ruling made with an opinion by a judge for the Turley versus the City of Peabody case, saying that the residents need to install a backflow device, because it is not the responsibility of the city.
So, no, it's all right.
No, see, because you don't listen. We've explained this to you on four different occasions, and you're still not listening to it.
Never asked about a sewer problem.
Not smart enough, but...
Anyway, well, she isn't really discussing her basement, though, even though last night she did. However, she's talking about the trash in the stormwater. And still, when you have five to six inches of rain, you cannot stop all the trash from everybody's property from up above me all the way down through Peabody, ending up in her, in that ditch down there. So, all the water from... All the water from up above myself and all the way down to where it goes down to Sims Meadows, and from Sims Meadows, it goes downtown to that creek. All that water carries all kinds of trash.
All the blackberry bushes.
Anyway, there's no way that the city can stop all the trash from going down. That's just all there is.
Routine maintenance of your storm drains would take care of a portion of it.
It would, but still, in a four... In a four to five inch rain, five to six inch rain, you're still not going to stop that.
No, but how many would go in maintenance of your storm drains? I'll come here. I'll come.
Ask prior board.
I'm asking you.
Okay.
Don't you answer any of these?
Okay, hey, excuse me.
Did the city really like to do their part?
Yes. The city didn't elect to do their part.
No.
No.
I've lived here 15 years, and I've never seen the city out there except the day before this incident. Let me tell you a little story about the day before this incident. We had people go out there with a flush truck that didn't know how to operate the equipment because they borrowed it from another department. They wound up the hose, it flipped like a bicycle tire with a baseball card on it. They ended up wrapping the hose into the back of the pickup truck, wrapped it around the back of the pump, and they took off dusting each other. Now, if you want to get clarification on that, ask the supervisor of the street department. So what's your point? My point is...
Your point is...
No, come on. Forget it. It was... Was this the citizens' hall in form, it should have been last night.
That wasn't public court.
Excuse me, excuse me.
So, now, you pay for what you get? You pay for what you get?
Yes.
I think our city employees have been coming here...
Mr. Bewick. Mr. Peewitt. And excuse me.
People that you're wasting. You got miles of people that's been in here and all been above those years and you take them and you throw them out and here you go backwards.
Hey, Joe.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
It's true.
It's true.
So, kids, you guys all need to...
No, this is the city.
No, no, this is not a citizen's comment.
Everybody, please come out.
This is not a citizen's comment. The citizen's comment was the sheet of paper that you signed to get the speech.
There's still spots left, right?
One spot.
I'll take it. And I'm giving it to Stephanie.
She's already on it.
Joe McCain gets it. Or anybody else who wants to speak.
No. It goes by name. Now, I'll expect you to sit down and not hear from you the rest of the evening until the meeting's over. Thank you. So, is the board going to pay her bill or we going to not pay the bill?
I'd like to find out what, you know, what, what does she really want? What will satisfy her, you know, she feels she's...
I went to La Claye's house and met with her and looked at the property and spoke with her. What she's asking for, and I can't give you a dollar amount, she didn't tell me a dollar amount. She's asking to be made whole. That's what she's asking. And what whole means is, you know, fences up, a lot of rest that it was, as it was prior to the event. That's the best I can explain it, is she's going to be whole, be whole again.
So, are you going to get bids for it? We gonna request Ms. Edmunds to get the bids for it or what?
Does she furnish the material with city furnished labor? I hear.
Are we gonna pay for every time it happens?
We have her, the board has her documentation, what she submitted to the insurance company, which outlines the cost of the fence and some other things like that. So, those documents are available to all of, all of...
She wants $2,782.80 for a new fence. And that is from the fence and debt debot on 1432 South Drive, St. Charles.
Is that actually a paid bill or is that just an estimated quote?
I think it's just an estimate, isn't it?
It's actually an estimate from the fence company. There's other documents of, like you were speaking, but this is actually from the fence company.
She, she also has given us a bill from her own painting company for cleanup, $500. Mulch, four scoops, $116. Gravel, $40. Trash bags, $17. And for a total of, well, she has $500 on labor and $156 for Ms. Lanius for $656.
I would like to, once again, to caution the board. That is why we have insurance, that's why the city has the insurance carrier. I think if you decide to go against what they're saying that it's an act of God, you're creating a dangerous precedent. But obviously, that's a policy decision that the board's gonna make, but I would be extremely wary of doing that.
Okay, so what's the board want to do?
I'd like to know what happened to the old fence.
Probably washed away?
She's got all, all the boards are in her, there, there would need to be some boards replaced that were nailed up to the four by four. And when it ripped over, she's got all the boards for it. It's probably like six or eight posts, okay, that can all be re-put up. I told her I'd come over there and help her do it, volunteer to help her do it, just like the others.
Excuse me, please.
That's what I'm saying. There's people going over there and helping put the trash up, you know, I mean, and get this stuff out there and the city was kind enough to come by and pick it up and hold it away. But I think it'll get away with like maybe six posts, five, six bags of concrete, an air gun, you know, and maybe two fours, maybe ten or twelve two-by-fours. And then we can put it up, she can paint it and she'll just have to take it from there. She's a painter, so she'll love to paint it. If she has a wall up that she doesn't have to look at that, she'll be happy as a...
Okay. So, on the two bills or the estimate and the bill, are we doing anything with it or not?
No.
Okay.
So... I think we need to establish how many posts she does need, how many two-by-four she needs, and what we can use to help put it up. And then, do you like me to do that? I'll gladly go to her house and speak to her again and, and see what I, I'll run it back. So, I'm perfectly capable of doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll go talk to her.
Thank you. Okay, we have two requisitions, one from the street department and one for the water line valve.
Last night at the workshop, we talked about, most of you probably know, the street department's four-wheel drive tractor, the big tractor they have. The transfer case, the damage is broken, so the front wheel drive is not working correctly. Got two estimates on that, one was from John Dear, Erb. And I'm gonna give you round numbers, the numbers are available if you want exact numbers. It was around $9,100 for the repairs. And then it was another facility, W. Noble, Nobe, Farmington, theirs came in at around $3,500. $3,450?
$35, $39?
No, no, no. $4,048.
$4,8356. Now, on both bids, I cautioned the board last night, that does not include the unknown when they open up that transfer case and anything else that may be broken in there. Obviously, they won't know that till they get the case opened up. But the bottom line is we need the tractor fixed. And so, that's the first requisition I have. The second one is, we're requesting, we're requesting $3,450 just to install a valve on Fifth Street. And what that would do will break up that little section of town there into two zones. So, we need to isolate, we'll at least be able to isolate half of that community if we do a water outage repair, anything like that, service. And now, obviously, if it's back farther back on the main, we'll have to kill the hope, shut all of that development down right there. But there's a company in town that can come in and they can install that valve without shutting the water off and without interrupting the water service to the residents in that neighborhood. And they're the only one in town that can do that, apparently. There would be no disinfection required, no go-on required. And that's what we're asking the council to approve, to go ahead and put that valve in. Yeah, they put the valve in hot, what they call it. Correct, they put it in hot, under pressure.
Okay. Got a motion to pay the two bills? Pardon me? Well, one, one bill, even though they're on the same requisition, one bill comes out of the street department and one comes out of the water department.
Right. Okay. But we have two bills. We have one for $10,000 per and one for $45.
Now, we have, in the package you've got today out of your box, there, there's two bills. One's for $4,483.56 and one's for $3,450. One's of the valve for the water department and $4,483.56 is for the street department. Okay? Okay, Erb's not... Do I have a motion to, for the requisition?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept both requisitions.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Young, seconded by Alderman Hurley.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, how about approval of minutes, please?
It says on the minutes, I wasn't there, but I was.
Well, I think if you look further down into the minutes, you'll see your name mentioned. On the second page, it says a motion was made by Alderman Han, seconded by Alderman Hurley to approve bill number 1356. And it has roll calls, Alderman Beewig, Walters, Kennon, Han, Hurley, and Young voting A. So, your name is on there. Do I have a motion to accept it, please? A motion by Alderman Hurley, seconded by Alderman Young. Well, we, we need this passed so we can take it to the bank for our checking accounts.
What are the minutes? We didn't hear any minutes. Oh, you don't read them aloud?
No, ma'am. They're posted out front of the building. Sorry. I'll give, I'll give you my copy after the meeting's over and you can have it. I have a motion made.
Alderman Beewig?
Yes.
Hurley? Walters? Kennon?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Please report.
On Monday, August 11th, Friday, August 15th, Patrolman Brian Benning with our department attended...
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Attended and successfully completed an interview and interrogation seminar withdrawn by the Midwest Common Drug Training Center. It will help in his duties as a patrolman to interview and interrogation prisoners. Also, on Friday, August 15th, Patrolman Ben Little attended successfully completed impaired driving seminar presented by the Department of Revenue. Once bring to the board the citizen's attention, on August 11th, we received word that the City of Peedly made the list of the fifty safest cities in the city. One hundred and forty-eight cities with a population of less than four thousand are evaluated. Of this group are made the top fifty coming in, our cities made the top fifty coming in at number forty-three. No other city in Jefferson signed a made list. The list is available from safewide.com on your internet. During the week of August 18th through August 22nd, officers in San Jose City and County along those surrounding neighborhood cities and counties, including Jefferson County, were called to Ferguson to assist with demonstrations and riots. People in Jefferson County made donations to water, sunscreen, handy wipes, and Miss Lanius all identity officers required to work many hours in Ferguson. People from our area and other areas of Jefferson County made donations to four police departments, Festus, Crystal City, Placelane, and Peedly. The items were delivered to Ferguson on Friday, August 22nd by officers from our department. And so, I would like to thank everyone. A lot of people made donations who were unable to get their names, but there was some people that made donations and we weren't able to identify them. They were David Beewig, Crystal Dale from Comtree, Peedly Police Officers Association, Steve and Cat Marcus, Christine Ricard, Ida Kennon, and Walter. There's a lot of people we missed because we couldn't get their names, but they were quite generous and all their donations. There were three calls that were worth noting during the month. On Friday, August 1st, Ben Little while patrolling Peedly Park Number One, found a white male with blood on his face. Patrolman Little and Patrolman Shealy stopped and questioned a sixty-one-year-old male and was determined he had tried to talk to female dude who was going to a hotel and had sex when the male was quite intoxicated. In addition, an eighteen-year-old male walked by and assaulted an eighteen-year-old and punched him. The sixty-one-year-old male was taken into custody by a law and warranted assault through Jefferson County Cross Street and Curtis Falls, charging him with a Tyson of a child. Another call we had was on August 11th, Patrolman Bob Young responded to a Peedly storage locker. Upon arrival, he found a locker that was broken into. Perpetrators replaced the victim's locker, found his own. There was some similar type of incidents were also reported at storage buildings of Crystal City and the Soto. Our Texas has been assigned this case. It also was also determined we also have another locker, two broken into at the same location. On Thursday, August 21st, Carter White was contacted by the owner of a nineteen-eight Yamaha motorcycle which had broken down on Sunday, August 17th, and left on the side of the road at the Southbound entrance ramp. He was unable to return to pick up his motorcycle until Thursday, August 21st, which was four days later. When he found him missing, the vehicle has been entered into our computer and stolen. One other thing I want to bring to the board's attention, our four-time standard, Crystal Park, has been unable to work and fulfill our requirements or license permission just to remove her from our city four-time ramps.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
On the break-ins at the, at the storage lockers, or we might do an extra patrol, maybe surveillance?
We, we're doing both of those. We're doing both of those. We also have some information to do with paints and stuff in the city in the way of some videotape that we're using to analyze and give them up with. We think that there's probably one, maybe two stuff at the same time. So, the three cars that were running around there that day were identified already or? No, I, in the storage locker, no, we think that one car is identified and we don't have a license plate yet so we haven't an idea what, what we're looking for there. It has turned out to be the same, same one and all.
Also, want to let the board know that when officers are taking classes in that, Ryan called me today. We have an officer taking two days of classes in St. Louis that he has permission to use his vehicle to take it to the class and on his way home, he can leave it as residence for the night because the next morning, he's returning also for class without coming back to the city. But when the classes are done, he'll return the vehicle. Okay? Thank you, honor. Court report? Okay. Alderman Kennon?
Yes, I would like to remind everybody that this Saturday at thirteen, we have C.T. and retirees in the park from about four o'clock to seven or seven-thirty that night. They are doing a fundraiser for the Crystal City Senior Center. So, come out and support it.
I'll come back to myself. How about Alderman Young?
Yes, I'd like to bring up, it came to my attention today that the police have a difficult time with the Peedly Park Number One and getting, patrolling it. If it turns dark, there's still kids down there that shouldn't be down there. And we maybe need to make an ordinance to say that when it's dusk, it's closed. That way, if they're still down there, then they can, then they can really enforce sending them home. And I, I really appreciate having that done. We could make an ordinance for, for closing the park at dusk and opening it dawn, just like other parks.
That it?
Yes.
Okay. How about Alderman Hurley? Alderman Beewig? Nothing, thank you. Okay. Just a pass. Just an announcement that our next board meeting won't be until the twenty-ninth of this month. And the reason being is we have to have a special public hearing on the twenty-fifth for the tax rate. So, we have to have a meeting following that, so instead of having two more meetings for the month, we'll just have one on the twenty-ninth. You're up.
Couple of things going on, I have to make a couple announcements real quick. Not on agenda, they're informational stuff. Is that tomorrow and Thursday, the admin staff, some of the admin staff have computer training for the new software they're going to implement. One piece of it's in October one, another piece later in January first. And so, tomorrow, the admin window will be closed tomorrow and back open on Thursday. Also, tomorrow, the pre-con meeting for Main Street Project. That's when we start moving, you'll start seeing some movement around that. Pre-con's tomorrow, so I expect to see mobilization with that within just a few days, perhaps even as early as next week. And as already talked about, the special public meetings for the tax rate. As far as budget issues go, on the NIT, we got correspondence from U L B Bank. And right now, we got a settlement from, a settlement payment for two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. But then, out of that, they took the interest payment, they set aside the interest payment, it was ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, leaving a balance of three seventy-three, six oh one...
No, 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 one ninety-three.
One ninety-three, five forty-one, eighty-five. With the net out of balance in that account, a three seventy-three, six oh one, forty-five. Unfortunately, there's a debt service reserve fund limit we have to meet at all times. And there's a deficit right now, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and five cents. Now, what's going to happen for the next twelve months, unless the board decides to make more aggressive payment on that, there's going to be... Nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars each month will go to debt reserve account to bring it back up to the minimum level it must maintain. And that'll be done over the next twelve months each month. And there's nothing we can do about it. That's what has to be done. And so, we'll program, program that into the budget. Let's make, have to look at the budgets, if there's any adjustments that need to be made, but we'll have to make accommodations for those funds. So, that's where we're at on that. On the budget, I'm not going to go through the entire packet. Greg couldn't be here tonight, so I told him I'd fill in for him. I don't know all the language that Greg knows, but we'll get through it. On general revenue funds, what we're looking at mostly year-to-date, how much money we collect at year-to-date compared to whatever expenses are at year-to-date. And then, at the very end, we're looking at where the variance is in percentages. And when we're looking at general revenue funds, right now, we have general revenue, revenues are two million, twenty-six dollars, two million, twenty-six thousand and seventy-two dollars. Now, our expenses are one million, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, two hundred and nineteen. So, we're at a surplus of roughly three, three twenty-six, almost three twenty-seven in that account there. But more importantly, when you look at it as far as percentage-wise for the year, where we should be, we're at fifty percent. And that's pretty close where we need to be. You know, we're not quite half, we're a little more than halfway through, but that's not bad at all. Motor fuel tax, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars in revenue. And we have no expenses out of that, so that's right now, that's where that account is setting year-to-date. Accounting Road Improvement Funds, revenues are one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Expenditures are twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-six. So, obviously, we got the surplus of, not a surplus, but just an over, of one hundred and thirty thousand, oh, seven hundred and seventy-four cents. Now, with that, we're right on target for our fiscal year, with sixty-three percent of collection of revenues, that's where we should be. Somewhere between fifty-eight, sixty-two, sixty-three percent, so we're right on target with that. Our nine-one-one fund, revenues were eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. The expenditures was twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars for an under of four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. When our standard of the nine-one-one fund, it always runs a little bit behind. And that seems to be the norm, at least through the budget cycle, I believe, so far. Transportation Sales Tax, revenues year-to-date is one hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. And the expenditures are ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
The expenditures are seventy-five?
Seventy-five, six fifteen. And the overtures are ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars over on that account. And again, we're, we're pretty close to the range of percentages where we need, for the fiscal year. The NIT Fund, these numbers truly don't reflect what that account is because this report was ran after this correspondence we got from the U L B Bank. So, these numbers are accurate, they're just as accurate as it was in July, so they are. These numbers here from UNL, UNL are the accurate numbers on that account at this moment. City Hall Fund, revenues, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Expenditures, one hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars of a under balance of nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. When you look at this account here, our expenditures are already at seventy percent for the years. So, when you look at those numbers, we should only have another thirty percent of expenditures. We're only at sixty-six, fifty-six percent on our revenue side. So, as we progress through the end of fiscal years, those should start equaling out. So, I'm not really worried about that at this time, and we will monitor that fund throughout the rest of the fiscal year. Utility Fund, Water Department, revenue was five forty-three, two seventy-two. Expenditures, four hundred and two thousand and thirty-three dollars, with a overture of one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine. And again, those numbers are right on target where they need to be. Utility Fund, Sewer Department, revenue, seven sixty-nine, four twenty-six. And expenditures, three twenty-seven, six thirty-one, for an overture of four forty-one, seven ninety-five. I'm going to tell you that those, unlike the Sewer Department, our expenditures is a little low right now. I'm assuming, I know we have, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody got me all these here I'm looking at. But if I'm not mistaken, we have a payment on the Ultra Light Disinfected System that we have in our wastewater system that's going to come due, so those numbers are going to change. I can't tell you the dollar amount of that payment, but I know it's heck. Six figures, I know for sure. So, that number will change drastically as we get towards the end of fiscal year, as far as having that overture in the revenue side. And the last thing I want to talk about, just general numbers. I haven't had a chance to talk to Greg about some of these dollar values, but I'll just put them out there for your information only. And this is operating and debt service account balances. In general, operating fund, as of seven thirty-one fourteen, we have nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars in that account. In the utility fund, and this appears to be both on water and sewer. At the end of July, we had three million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. And for a total of both those funds, or all the funds, five million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Our debt service, again, the NIT debt service, those numbers I'm not going to give you, they're not accurate anymore. City Hall debt service account, currently, we're at three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. And the sewer debt service account, I'm showing a total of fifty-five thousand and two dollars for a total debt service balance of six hundred and forty-one dollars and two, six forty-one, two seventy-seven. For a total, operating and debt service accounts, five million, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I know there's a lot of numbers I just threw out there on you. It's a little confusing for myself. But if you have any questions about the budget, you know, all of them come in City Hall. It'd be great if Greg sees here our account, because he really knows this stuff inside and out. And as time goes on, I'll bring more information to him about how these are formulated, so I'll relay that to you during this meeting. But you're always welcome to come in, I will gladly sit down with you and talk to you about them, to the best of my ability, I will prep it with that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Watkins?
Well, my name's Mr. Watkins, for those that don't know. Well, he very displeased with the board meeting. I think he made a violent mistake with his staff, and he... That's not all, and he powered us, but I had to go in the way he fired. He had not enough, got nothing to tell them. Why did she fire? Because he really don't, because he was working to come back and punch him in the lawsuit. Okay? And the other thing, you know, our employees were scared of, scared of the job because this B. Wick called him a bunch of, you know...
Inmates.
Inmates. Help me, thank God.
You're welcome.
And Ed Walters, I don't know how many times, shut up, the citizen, shut up.
Twice.
But he said, "You're right," twice. That happened. And since then, he's apologized, so I had to say that. But to you, Ed Walters, you need to put a string on B. Wick, B. Wick to get him to be quiet when the citizen's up there talking, he keeps trying to get into a confrontation, and you allow him to do that. But yet, when we get into a confrontation, I do, you want to throw us out. That's really what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol McCain?
Hi, Mary. My name's Carol McCain. And I've lived in this town for fifty-plus years. And I've got really one question that I'd like to ask. When you guys ran your campaigns, it was to better the city, to save us money, and to clean house. I would like to know, how do you have a goal, do you have a long-term goal of the actions that yous have taken to better the city? The releasing of the attorney, the releasing of...
Terry.
Terry Thomas, the releasing of Stephanie, and probably some more are on your list of possibilities. I would like to suggest that we have a state-of-the-city address. Maybe, I don't know, we've had a, one of our meetings or something. I think that it would be nice for yous to let us know what direction you're actually wanting to take the city by the decisions that you're making. Okay. I know everything happens for a reason. God didn't say, "Whoops, I didn't know this was going to happen." I don't know what the reason is. Maybe it is to get us as citizens to be more concerned about what's going on in the city and what is going on with the decision-makers that we have collected to represent us. I know that a lot of you up here have been let go from different positions. And I know that you have always expected a reason to be let go. I know we're a fourth-class city. I know you don't have to have the reason. But I think because of who you are and what you're supposed to be doing, or in the city, you can give us the courtesy, the respect of letting us know what's going on and why. When I called Mr. Bewig to ask him why they fired Stephanie, he told me because he wanted, because the board wanted someone who would work closer with the mayor and the board. And I said, "Do you already have somebody in mind?" He said, "No." I said, "Do, is it because she did not do her job?" He said, "No." And anybody can tell, she does her job, and she does it well. Then, he called me back and left a voice message and said that what I put on Peabody twenty-twenty, because everybody was wanting to know the reason, she does her job, she does it well, says, "Why? Why?" So, I gave them the reason that he believed me. But he told me that what I said is not what he stated, and that what I said was misleading. How is that misleading? I'd like to ask you that.
That is not what I stated to you. That's a carbon copy of another situation that took place in the city. Almost word for word, and I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Bewig, that is exactly, as God is my witness, what he said to me.
Amen. Amen. Okay.
Okay. Anyway, I don't know how it could be misleading, but I really think, then someone on there commented that Stephanie is a not-black girl. Nothing could be further from the truth. You guys are the ones that let him get off so easy with his phone bill.
Amen.
Yous decided to do that. Yous could have made him really, really pay it, but you chose not to. So, I would say, you know, that that situation is a little, little bit backward. But to give respect, you have to give it. And I think that that's not too much to ask, to give us respect by being more transparent, being more honest, being more open, being more... Whatever God's plan is in this, and I know maybe I'm not supposed to speak this in here, but whatever it is, I think that we should be able to come up with a plan where we can work better together and not have all of this anger, attitude. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Meem?
She pretty much asked everything that I wanted to know. Why can't you give a reason on why you fired her? And then, Bewig wants to make comments about the citizens, but it's the employees, the inmates, and the volunteers.
I never heard that said tonight.
No, not tonight, just other times. How do the citizens feel? I know I don't feel very well, knowing that you're an Alderman, you're a volunteer, you're a volunteer.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
Stephen.
I'm happy that's recorded too, Dean.
Okay, I have a couple things to say. First of all, I would like to thank everybody that has supported me in this position. I think this board is feeling that they can come on here and do whatever they personally see fit. You are not doing what your constituents voted you in here for, at all.
No.
Okay? You have people that have many years of experience, and you're not listening to them. You're doing whatever it is you see fit for this city. You were not elected to do what you personally want done around here. You were elected to do what all of these people here want, and you are completely defying what they are asking of you. You're not even listening to them. You are listening to a small majority that hangs out in a building down the street telling you what needs to be done. You're not listening to everybody. Mr. Young, how many constituents in your ward have you asked what they want out of this town? How many?
None.
None. Ilda, how many? The same few people down the street, right? Ed? None. I am a resident. None of you have asked me what I want out of this town. None of you. I have young kids that are growing up in this town, and I'm sorry, I would rather them move out as long as you are all on this board. It is a disgrace. There are so many positive things that can be done in this town, and you are washing them all down the drain. You have no idea what goes around here. You don't ask the questions of the employees that know the answers. You make your own decisions and you go with them. You have a gentleman in the water department that has been here for 41 years. You have a gentleman in the store department that has been here for 36 years. I was here for eight. You never once came into my office and asked me what was going on. You came in and asked why I didn't put McCain's toeing on a pee bill. I didn't have to. I didn't have to cut a check to them. It was paid by the insurance company. You, you tried to humiliate me in front of these people, and it didn't work. It backfired on all of you. I am no longer an employee here, and so be it. Like my mother-in-law said, everything happens for a reason, and that's probably so that I can start speaking up for the residents and these employees in this town. As far as the petition that's going around, I appreciate everybody that signs it, and I think you think that it's funny down there. This is not funny.
Your husband or boyfriend here is just stalking Stephanie.
You know what? You're an elected official, deal with it. Okay?
And who else is speaking? Excuse me, who else is speaking?
Cause he started talking.
Just be quiet, please.
Let him be quiet.
My point is, you guys want to sit up here and laugh about things. You want to laugh about a petition that's been going around. I will not take my job back, even if it was offered, as long as you are on the board. Okay?
Whoa, that's it?
Hey, hey, hey. That's so loud.
That was...
You follow your own rules.
You're supposed to be in a respectful position, and that was an immature, dick move.
The point being is the petition, as far as me being on there, could be removed. But as far as you all resigning, I think that you all do need to. It is in the best interest of the city, because you are not putting the best foot forward. You're doing whatever personally serves you right. That's not what is in the best interest of the city. Okay? As far as the tourism committee, I'll brief you on a few things, so you all are now educated on what's going on in the city, since you have nobody else. Mr. Brown is stuck in a very tough situation, and so is Amber. Nothing personal, Tom, but you're not a municipal attorney. You are a great prosecuting attorney, and it's time to get a municipal attorney around here. You shouldn't have to be researching things to tell them the answers. We need somebody in here that knows them right off the bat. As far as the committee for the tourism tax, that was voted in by the people, and yes, it should have been collected from point A. Does not have to have a committee in order to collect it. You have to have a committee in order to spend it.
Yep.
As far as cost-saving measures, you wanted to take away the vehicles from all of the employees to save money. I understand, but did you research it and look into it? Because from where I'm sitting, the legal fees that we are spending way outweighs the cost of what it was for the employees to take home the cars. As far as Mr. Kendall, he is not paying the 5% tax, just so you all know, because it has not been delivered to the county yet and accepted. So, once it's been accepted, then he will start paying the 5% fee. As far as the annexation, it is somewhat the responsibility of the resident themselves to fill out the proper information, and I do not accept that Mr. Walters said yesterday at the workshop that it was the city's fault. Each resident that fills out that application has to fill out the proper information also. And as far as accountability for actions, I have heard it said many times that people were upset that myself or Terry blamed prior employees. We never blamed any prior employees, and I would just like to set that straight. It was not one particular employee that did anything intentionally wrong. It was the years and years of complacement that took place around here that things just fell by the wayside. And as far as I'm concerned, I have heard twice tonight from Mr. Bee Wood, it was the current board. It is time for you, as an elected official, to start taking accountability for your own actions, not blaming it on the previous boards. Okay? It is no longer the fault of the previous board. It is now your fault for anything that goes wrong in this town from this point forward.
It's my fault for the progress of this city, too.
It is your fault for the progress of this city, because there is no progress. You are taking this city down no more. So, the last thing I would like to say is that I would really appreciate all of you thinking about turning in your resignations, because you are not doing what me Missouri Ethics swore you wanted to do. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it. Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor. What have we done, Jeff? Who's in favor?
Everybody.
Last here.
All in favor.
That's all ED is, is what I'm saying. That's all it is. Everybody's scared, I ain't scared of it. And I'm a cripple. And I'm a cripple, I ain't scared of it.